All right, good morning, everybody. It's Monday morning, June 24th, 2013. It's nine o'clock and we'll begin our Santa Rosa County Board of Commissioners meeting for this morning. I ask everybody, if you would, please turn your communication devices on silent mode and respect each other's privacy. I'm gonna start this morning with a short prayer and then follow it up, I'll ask Commissioner Salter to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Please rise.
Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for all that you've blessed us with. Lord, Lord, just help us through all these times and guide our thoughts, Lord. Lord, thank you for our military that protects us each day, our first responders, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings of life, Lord, that you give us and the rains and the different items that every day you provide us, Lord, that sometimes we take for granted. Lord, we just thank you for that. Lord, now be with us throughout this meeting and we give you praise in his name. Amen.
Please join me in the flag for our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right. First thing we got on today's agenda is approval of today's meeting and ask that, starting with Commissioner Williamson, if there's any add-ons.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Salter?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just have one budget amendment in the amount of $2,500 for patent and trademark services associated with an effort that the TDC is doing.
Okay, that'll be on the budget finance?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I will note that Commissioner Melvin's out today. He's attending the Florida Association of Counties meeting on behalf of the county, so we'll look to his co-chair to do budget finance. I have one add-on. It's from the National Association of Counties. It's a call to action. I passed it out to the rest of the board members and we'll make a copy of that available for the other folks if you want it, but basically it's in question about the federal government wanting to remove the tax-free municipal bond ability for counties and municipalities. So we'll add that on as item number 10 on our administrative committee.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, let me go back. I did have one add-on related to restore. If we could add that on, it's number 11 under admin.
All right, so we'll make that 11. Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. All right, we'll go ahead and get started then. Item number one today is Economic Development Committee and we'll, Commissioner Salter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one item today. It's just information only, an update on Gulf Power Company-sponsored site certification process. Shannon Overtree will give us an update.
Good morning. Did have a PowerPoint presentation ready, but the computer's not reading the USB point, USB drive, so I'll just go through the presentation myself. The, as you may be aware of, the Gulf Power announced a certification program back earlier this spring and then back in early April, we had a kickoff meeting to, many of us went to, to identify and to learn the aspects of the certification program. Back in early May, we, the commissioners approved a letter being submitted to each of the, on each of the sites to approve the site certification for the two industrial parks and one industrial site. And I'm proud to say that at the end of this week, we will be sending off the two other binders just like this for the 160 and the I-10 park located in the county. So that is going out hopefully Wednesday, or will be going out Wednesday, with all documentation that is required for the certification for Phase Two. The three sites that we submitted that are public properties are, is the Whiting Aviation Park, the Northwest Florida I-10 Park, and the property located off Jeff Hace Road. In addition, there are two additional sites owned by private developers that is being submitted toward McCallum-Sweeney for this process. One is the property located directly across from the Santa Rosa Industrial Park and the second privately-owned site is the property owned by Vixen of our, directly at the intersection of 87 Interstate 10. The, just some of the items, I just wanted to inform the board of some of the items that were required to go through this process. There was a 170-site and community questionnaire, just 170 questions that we had to answer, going from zoning, slopes, topography, transportation, subsurface rights, who owns the mineral rights to the site, to education, workforce, union information, even to the emergency response time. So getting information from lifeguard to the sheriff's department, to the fire departments, to working with all utility companies, we had to pull all this information together for this, for this Phase Two. We had to pull together additional 30 attachments on top of this 170 questions. For example, we had to pull together 10, over 10 different types of maps just to show for each, for each park, from zoning to topography to FEMA to the national wetlands. It's things we had to show. And it's out there. It's just gathering all this data and pulling it together at one time. And then also, I'll have to give kudos to East Milton Water, City of Milton, and Gulf Power, providing the, all the utility information that has been needed for this site, for each of the sites. Each site has different requirements, from how many gallons per day of water to the number of gallons for wastewater service, to the voltage for electricity. And lastly, I'd like to just say special thanks to the, just a few individuals from the development services and Michael from engineering and all the different departments. I mean, there was no way that this could have been completed just on our own. We had to reach out to the different departments, from Tony's department was working with Mary Ann and Becky, just pulling everything together. So this was a county-wide process and pulling this information together. And, you know, East Milton Water, they were on the ball. East Milton Water, I supplied with the information that I needed. Two days later, I had it in hand. So they were, they were really pressing. I think all the utility, all the utility companies understand that, why we should be doing this and how it's beneficial at all. So that's my presentation and, like I said, I have two other binders just like this. This is just Whiting Aviation Parks binder, two others just like this that will be going out Wednesday. Any questions?
Shannon, good update. I want to personally say thank you for all the work you're doing. Good article in the newspaper yesterday.
Thank you.
Time we started getting some favorable economic development coverage, so appreciate all your hard work and all the other departments chipping in and doing their part, too. And it's important for people to understand about industrial sites and certification. When a prospect looks at a site, a lot of times the average person doesn't understand everything that has to go into that site in order to make that site competitive. So it looks like the economy's starting to turn around. There was a good article in the paper this weekend about unemployment rate in the state of Florida and I think Santa Rosa, we're what, 5.2?
No, I think it was like 6.3 or something like that.
I think it's down in the 5, but anyway, it's dropping and that's good. So it looks like timing is really good for our industrial sites as the economy continues to recover, so.
Yes, and after this is submitted, then we're expecting the site consultants to come down the last week of July, first week of August, to actually review the sites physically. And then sometime in September, we will be receiving a notification back from the site consultant whether or not the sites move forward in the process. This is, once again, this is just the evaluation process. Some sites may not make it through to the next step, which is Phase Three of the actual certification, so.
Any questions from anyone else? So in summary, we have five total sites in the county, three county-owned and two privately-owned.
Correct. I think we had more sites submitted by the, as the county whole than anyone else.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate the economic update.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Give you a couple of weeks off and you forget, forget how to do things here. All right, Administrative Committee. Item number one is discussion of the following items as requested by the Florida Department of Health at Santa Rosa County. One-time allocation of 293, 239,000 to the Health Department Trust Fund balance due to Medicaid reform and budget reductions, and a resolution amending the Florida Department of Health Santa Rosa County fee schedule. We have with us today, this young lady. Good morning. Surprised me, didn't you? All right, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. The Florida Department of Health in Santa Rosa County submitted a letter for request of one-time funding in the amount of $239,000. This funding will support programs and essential health services in Santa Rosa County for both visitors and residents. When we build our budget, we look at historical data from the past five years. Over the past five years, we've lost over a million dollars of revenue funding from both the state, federal, local, and grant funding for our health department. With changes in Medicaid funding and new systems in Medicaid coming out, we lost almost $600,000 in revenues from our dental department, which previously had can, offered $600,000 to $750,000 to help with overall providing of services in Santa Rosa County. This year, they are able to meet their own operating budgets but not give anything back to the health department. We have a trust fund that's utilized for emergencies and as a safety net for our operations, and we have begun using that safety net. We have developed mitigation strategies to make our CHDs sustainable. There were some questions about our fleet, our fleet of vehicles. We have 14 vehicles, 10 of those are over 10 years old, and our newest vehicle is a 2007 with over 100,000 miles. At this point, we think we're gonna manage and stick within that fleet that we have right now and continue to use it as long as they're safe. We've looked at all our overhead operating expenses and have been able to reduce cleaning, lawn, security, and phone services. We're also enclosing, we're closing our environmental health building, which should bring us about $18,000 to $20,000 of saved operating expenses, and that building will be coming back to the county by the end of the week. We currently are aligning our services and programs with available funding and consolidating our service delivery points. At this point, we are the only Medicaid dental program in the county, and I fear that unless managed well, that that, that may go away as well. Other health services that are not provided locally, many of the private physicians send their people to us when they need help managing communicable diseases and also the research and following of those diseases in an epidemiological method. We are also looking to partner with other agencies so that we don't duplicate services in the county, that we can use the money wisely that we're given from all sources of revenue. We also are looking at another workforce reduction. In the past three years, we've had a 15% reduction and anticipate another 15% reduction now. Along with our request, we also submitted a fee increase. We have not increased our fees in over six years. We felt that due to economic times, that it would be inappropriate to ask for the citizens who were in need to pay more. However, now the economy is starting to recover and the health department is the one in need, we felt it was an appropriate time to go ahead and submit a fee increase. Many of these increases are the same as our counties that are around us. If they're not the same, then they're a little bit lower. So I hope that you'll consider our request and consider that an investment in your local public health services, and I'll be happy to try and answer any of your questions.
All right. Sandra, thank you. I know it's kind of short notice, but I did have an email this morning from a constituent that you were given a copy of.
Yes.
Could you address a couple of those for me, please?
The email suggested Medicaid increases regardless of relationship would limit increases to Medicaid reimbursable services, and those are things that we are already doing. We are looking to only provide services that can be funded with federal, state, and then the local revenues. Anything more than that, we are gonna partner with our community partners to help provide those services.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions from members of the board?
One of the things the board may want to remember, we've got the building that she's talking about, the environmental health building is, I believe it's, it's just a shade under 3,000 square feet, so that's, we're trying to look at least some kind of uses for that building or maybe a, a structure that we can, we can surplus. So, I mean, it's, we're looking, I thought the building was a little larger when Ms. Parker talked about that a month or so back with me, but I believe it's, I think they had said that building is about 2895.
And the building is in good shape. Every, everything in it at this point is working. We want to get it cleaned up a little bit before we give it back.
Bless its heart.
All right. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Lynch?
Thank you. Ms. Park, the, your budget for the upcoming year, how does it compare to last year's budget?
It's a million dollars difference. Last year, we were at 5.1. This year, we're projecting at 4.1, and those are very conservative revenues that are generated by the fees that you see in front of you.
What about your county request for the coming year?
Not, no change in that. We hope to remain stable there.
No change? Okay, all right. Thank you.
And of course, Ms. Park's already talked to county administrator and county finance, and, you know, we've got that part of it worked out, so if there's no other questions, move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Thank you.
Hearing none, it passes. Thank you for coming out this morning. Appreciate that. Item number two is update presentation on the FDOT Rural Work Program and Transportation Projects outside the TPO boundary, and we have with us today Mary Beth Waschnok from TPO. Good morning, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Santa Rosa County Commission. My name is Mary Beth Waschnok. I'm with the West Florida Regional Planning Council, and the planning council has a contract with the Florida Department of Transportation to provide information to the counties that have a rural, either all rural or a portion of your county is rural, on the projects that are in the five-year work program. I think we may have a couple of maps. Okay. The first map, which all of you at the DIA should have a copy, it says FDOT Five-Year Work Program 2014 through 18. These are the projects that are scheduled to be in the five-year work program, and I'm just gonna give you a little more information about what you have. The first project is County Road 191, Muntzen Highway. It is resurfacing from State Road 4 to the Alabama Line, and construction is scheduled in fiscal year 14. Project number two is State Road 4 from County Road 87A, Market Road, to Okaloosa, to the Okaloosa County line, and that also is resurfacing. Construction is scheduled in '15. Your third project, County Road 197, this is for Pave Shoulders. This is from Fox Pond Trail to just north of County Road 182. This has not yet begun, but it should be in the process of starting soon. Project number four, State Road 4, from Max Lane to Town of J City Hall. This is a sidewalk project. As you all know, in the past few years, we have gradually been doing some sidewalk projects through the Safe Routes to Schools program in the J area, and this project has design in '14. The final project, as you will notice, is highlighted, that project is actually completed. That is for resurfacing of State Road 89 from County Road 178 to the J City Limits. The other map that you all have, these are the requests that we have put together with your staff, and your staff will be presenting this later on in this agenda. And I won't go into a whole lot of detail, but you will see that you've got a variety of types of projects, and it's throughout the county. In fact, it is crossing your MPA boundary. Some of these projects, yes, part of them are in the rural area, but they're actually coming down into the metropolitan area, and we're actually naming them as one project. So I won't go into a lot of detail about this map since your staff, they're the ones that put this together, and they'll be talking about this later. I just want to mention a couple of things to you, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay. Ms. Vergey Bowen, she's with the Florida Department of Transportation. She's here with us today, and I also want to remind you that the planning council can provide planning services to local governments. That's part of why we're here, and you do not have to go out for a bid. You can use us directly without having to do an RFP process. So just want to remind you of that. Thank you for having us here today. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from board members? Mary, I appreciate what you guys do. It's nice to see we've been getting, I think, our fair share of funding from the state, whether it be state programs or the SCOP or STOP program. We, I think we've been doing pretty good, and of course, Stephen and the Public Works Division out there, you know, worked hand-in-hand with you to bring those projects in. You know, you add that with the announcement of 87 South and the new bridge and Avalon Boulevard and the things we've seen in the past, I feel, feel like everybody...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say that your staff is great to work with, and that's part of the reason you're getting, the projects you get is they know what to do. They know how to do the process, and they've all been great to work with, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else this morning before we leave this over? Okay, well, thank you. We'll, just, that's just an update, so we won't be readdressing that on Thursday.
That'll be found in the public services, Action Island.
Action Island, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Walker. All right, we'll move on now to item number three is discussion of extension of waiver of nuisance noise ordinance requirements for the Boo Weekly Annual Charity Golf Tournament to include 8:00 PM through midnight Wednesday, July 24th, and 8:00 PM through midnight Thursday, July 25th, 2013. We recently approved this for the, I believe, Friday and Saturday night, and I'll move this to Thursday's agenda, seeing no objections to that. We'll talk, we'll finish that on Thursday. Item four is discussion of donation or gift and provisions of the Alice Hale Hall, I'm sorry, Alice Hall Trust. It's item number four, and we have backup here. Commissioner Williamson, would you like to take this?
Yes, Mr. Walker and Angie and I met with Robert Robinson, who's trustee on this, and their attorney. In the time, we just felt like it's not something that the county could take on for us, the cost to do something like this, and it's not just to start up, but also to maintain over a period of time, and we just felt that we needed to deny this and we need to bring it before the board for input as to what direction to go.
Okay.
And I guess everybody's read the backup.
Yeah, I've read the backup and I understand where we're at with this. I just, my questions were, have we discussed it with like IFIS or the Extension Office, anybody like that that could possibly work through this?
We've not. We didn't.
What, you know, I mean, you're commissioner for that district, and of course, we, you know, I've seen the backup where, you know, you've worked on this, but I, I would like to at least maybe air this through the IFIS office and Extension Service and, I don't know, I haven't read the rules and regulations on the property, but I, it may be something that's doable through them, but...
Well, I think if we, as far as the county part, they need to answer from the county yes or no, up or down, and then they were going to see if there were any other agencies or whatever that wanted to maybe take this on, and I think that really, as far as I'm concerned, we need to give them an answer, yes or no.
I didn't know how soon this was required or needed. Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think to kind of allay your concern there, the, the document itself that establishes the gift says that if the Board of Commissioners disclaims the gift, then it will go to another 501(c)(3) organization to be used in essentially the same way.
If they're willing to accept it.
Right, so this would give them an opportunity to step into the county's shoes.
Okay, well, I'd certainly like to see if they, you know, we could pass a buck to them, type thing, because it seems like a great idea, but I, of course, understand funding nowadays, we don't, and of course, you know, an agricultural museum would be limited in its visitations and stuff like that, so we couldn't count on support from, you know, visitors to establish that. So my deal would, if it was to come into creation, it would have to be some sort of working farm with possibly, you know, inmate or IFIS providing labor and then possibly the produce or something like that going to Florida, Santa Rosa Fresh, but whatever, I mean, we can give it a go with, with one of them other agencies. Commissioner Williamson, what's your wishes on this?
Well, I would like to put it on the agenda for Thursday's meeting to, like I say, give them an answer, yes or no, and at this time, my answer would be no.
Okay, all right. Hearing no other conversation from the rest of the board, and that's how we'll look at it Thursday, and I'd do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Next item today is item number five, discussion of resolution creating a Longview Street Road Paving MSBU. It's pretty much standard procedure on creating this MSBU. Is there any other comments or questions from either staff or the board? If not, I'll move that to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item six is discussion of resolution establishing tentative rates for the 2013, 2014 municipal service benefit unit projects, and we'll be taking those up in our budget hearing, and these all are listed for, both on hard copies and on, on the internet. I'm sure if anybody has objections to that that are involved in MSBUs, we'll be certainly hearing from them. Any other comments from board members, staff? Seeing none, it passes till Thursday. Item seven is discussion of annual renewal of contract with the Florida Department of Children and Families for domestic violence grants. This is item number seven on our agenda today, and the backups here for us. Again, this is something that we visit every year at this time, and it provides very necessary funding for, for these organizations, and unfortunately, it's something we do have to have. It's unfortunate, we have to have funding for abused or violence to our children, but I support this 100%, and if there's any other comments, questions, if not, we'll move it to Thursday. Hearing none, it passes. Item eight is discussion of granting easement, allowing access to property at 6776 Chafin Street. Mr. Furman, do you have anything on this, or...
I think Ms. Jones is...
Ms. Jones, okay. Sorry. Angie?
This is a parcel of property that if you drove by, you wouldn't realize that it's not part of someone's yard. They've driven over it, it was part of their driveway for a very, very... They've driven over it, it was part of their driveway for a very, very, very long time. The parcel is located at the corner of Alabama Street and Chafin Street, and when the property owners recently went to sell their property, they were informed via survey title search, et cetera, that their driveway actually goes over a parcel of county property. Now, it would be possible for them to construct, legally possible, to construct another driveway on Alabama Street. That hasn't been their traditional access. The house actually faces Chafin Street, and they'd have to build on a significant incline. We have no plans for this parcel of property. We don't know of a use that we have of it. So granting an easement over it for these folks just to continue what they've done for many, many years would seem to be an appropriate thing.
Okay, and I'm sure County Attorney will take care of any legal documents on that. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm John, I wanted to fore-. Just ask if we'd be glad to request that, anything we need to do.
All right. I don't see any problem with that. And this is, entire lot is county-owned?
Yes, sir. We don't have a legal description for the property, so I would suggest that perhaps it be the requestor's responsibility to provide us with a legal description.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would it be appropriate at some point to vacate? Or would that be the process that we would go through for this? Because it looks like it's not a piece of property that the county could use.
Correct.
So it's small, it's irregularly shaped, and it's going to have an easement over it. So rather than continue to own and-
Yeah, I think the driveway might then become owned by the proper, the adjacent property owner, depending on how you divide the property. That's what I was sitting here trying to think, as it's split. We can look at that, I'll be glad to look at it.
Okay. The other option would be to sell the property, get it from under. How did we acquire the property? Was it a gifted piece of property or anything like that?
No, sir, it was not needed to us, to my understanding. It's a prescriptive area.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Thanks, Mike.
John, good to see you. All right, the next item is item number nine, item scheduled for public hearing on Thursday, June twenty-seven, two thousand thirteen, which is an ordinance establishing the Windward Cove Court Subdivision Street Lighting Municipal Service Benefit Unit Project. And we'll take that up at nine thirty on Thursday morning. Item number ten is information I brought to the board this morning from the National Association of Counties. It's a call for action. Some reason, the federal government's still trying to mess with municipal bonds and their ability to be tax-exempt. The call to action urges us to sign a letter to the House Leadership in support of the tax exemption for municipal bonds. The deadline for signatures is Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, so we've kind of got to move fast on this. What it asks for is ask your House Representatives to co-sponsor House H.R. one-one-two and help prevent this. Everybody knows, probably knows the history of municipal bonds. They've been around a hundred years. Ever since the IRS was established, we've had the ability to issue government bonds, sometimes referred to as muni bonds. There's currently a paper that will be released this week from NACO called Municipal Bonds Build America, A County Perspective on Changing the Tax-Exempt Status of Municipal Bond Interest. Municipal bonds have, bonds finance a range of local infrastructure projects that have a long history of low default rates. Any tax imposed on a current tax-exempt municipal bond interest will affect all Americans as investors in municipal bonds and as taxpayers securing the payments of municipal bonds. In two thousand twelve alone, the debt service burden for counties would have risen nine billion dollars if municipal bonds were fully taxable over the last fifteen years, and about three point two billion in the case of the twenty-eight percent cap. So I think it's important for us to get that letter off to our congressman, and I ask the board to support that. And is there any other comments or questions from our board members? If not, then I'll ask that staff get that letter ready for my signature. We get to Congressman Miller, and do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. All right, next item is Commissioner Lynch. Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we've been sort of in limbo, waiting for the regulations to be issued or promulgated by the Treasury Department on the Restore Act. The regulations are what's going to drive the next step for the states and the five Gulf states and the counties in developing their projects for Restore, in developing their multi-year implementation plan. And we've been hearing the regs are coming, the regs are coming since February or March. It turns out, we learned late last week, that there is a draft, of a draft of the regulations that was issued some weeks ago. The Treasury Department went directly to the five states and offered to release the draft regulations. Four of the states have had those regulations for some number of weeks, but Florida has not. Florida was unable to obtain a copy of the regulations because of our open records law, because the Treasury Department required the states to sign a nondisclosure agreement before they would issue or give them a copy of the proposed regulations. So Florida is the only state out of the five that has not even seen a copy of the proposed regulations yet because of our public records law. So in any event, our federal delegation is working hard to obtain a copy of those regulations and look out for our interests, and we should have a copy within the next thirty days or so. They should be released. But to this point, it appears that Florida is at a disadvantage compared to the other states, just because of the way things have transpired.
Commissioner Lynch, thank you, and thank you for all your work, extra work on this. Appreciate it. Everybody knows how important these restore dollars are, and are going to be in the future recovery of our area of the five states, and it's just, boy, got to keep your eye on the ball. It's like a shell game, I guess, up here, so thank you, appreciate that. Engineers report today, we have no items, so at this time, we'll go to Public Service Committee. Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of abatement bid process for the following properties: twenty-seven sixteen Bayland Court in Navarre, sixty-three ninety-five Metz Road in Milton, fifty-two forty-eight Milton Trail in Milton, forty-three eighty-seven Reinsma Road in Milton, twenty-four ninety-five Salamanca Street in Navarre, forty-six twenty-four Santa Rosa Drive in Pace, and twenty-two fourteen Tom Street in Navarre. I'll move these to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of the Santa Rosa County Transportation Disadvantaged Coordinating Board to begin competitive procurement process for the Santa Rosa County Community Transportation Coordinator for Services, July first, two thousand fourteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Gomian, any discussion necessary on this project?
No, sir, not particularly, other than this would be essentially a renewal of the process that happens every five years. I don't anticipate that the county would have a desire to take on that responsibility.
I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of rural transportation priorities for submittal to the West Florida Regional Planning Council. And we have a copy of that, it's been distributed. Any questions, discussion? Mr. Gomian?
Just that it would be consistent with what Ms. Waschnack described earlier. Sean is here, if you have any questions, you do have a list of, which for the most part is a continuation of projects that have been listed in the past, but if you have any questions, certainly Sean could help with those questions.
Any questions? Not, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is discussion of the Hurricane Housing Recovery Program, HHRP. Second mortgage subordination request for the property located at fifty eighty-nine Clinton Road in Pace. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes Public Services.
Thank you, Elaine. We'll turn now to Commissioner Williamson for Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items today. The first item is results from a request letter from West Florida Baptist Academy from, it's Mike Brown, the Vice Principal, and it's in reference to safety improvements. It's discussion of making a request to Florida Department of Transportation to perform an engineering study on U.S. Highway ninety in the area of West Florida Baptist Academy to evaluate the need for the following safety improvements: school zone, speed limit reduction, advisory speed limit reduction with existing flashing beacons, and turn lane modifications to enhance safety of turning movements. If you would, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Brown. My address is forty-two oh eight Scooter Lane, Milton, Florida, three-two-five-eight-three.
Any questions from the board, or anything you'd like to say, Mr. Brown?
Good morning. I just thank you for the opportunity to discuss this matter for a little bit, and for you guys looking into it. Our property is located right on that stretch of Highway ninety between Avalon Boulevard and Lowe's, where the speed limit increases to fifty-five miles per hour, which is fine, except for the fact of between seven-thirty and eight o'clock in the morning, and two-thirty to three o'clock in the afternoon, when we have, we have about three hundred students in our school, and the only access in and out of our property is off of Highway ninety, fifty-five miles an hour. Most cars are doing more than that, in excess of that oftentimes, and anybody that goes in and out anywhere on that stretch of Highway ninety knows how tricky that can be, especially when you have to cross to the other side, and knows how fast cars go on that road. We do have an advisory speed limit reduction right now, that's forty-five miles an hour. There's flashing signs there, but I can pretty much guarantee you that nobody pays attention to it. It's just totally ignored, and they just fly through there at least at fifty-five miles an hour, if not quicker. It's something that's concerned us for a long time. I know we've looked into it in the past. We do have some concerned parents that have kind of brought this up again, and have started pushing for the state or the county to help us out, to do something about that. Only by God's grace, I think, has there not been an accident up to this point. He has been very good to our ministry, and looked over us, and watched over us, and different things like that, but all it would take is one accident to realize how big of a problem it is, and we're trying to do whatever we can to prevent something like that from taking place. In the afternoon, especially between two-thirty and three o'clock, we have many young drivers, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, that have their driver's licenses, that leave our property headed out, and their judgment is not always the greatest. And sometimes, you can see a car down a ways, but if they're doing sixty-five, seventy miles an hour, which does happen, you know, they pull out and don't make the right decision, something devastating could happen, you know, especially if it is fifty-five miles an hour and you have a collision. It's going to be, it's going to have some pretty drastic consequences. So we are requesting that something be done. I know we've asked even, we have different Santa Rosa County Sheriff's officers that have their kids in our schools, and some of them have told us that they'll just put a car out there in the morning or in the afternoon, but I don't think that that's really happened very often at all. So there's really nothing there to make sure traffic gets slowed down, and so we're seeking some help. We're willing to do whatever we need to, to see this situation resolved.
Chairman.
Mr. Gomian.
Let me understand, do you already have the flashing lights?
There is, there is, on both east and west, there are neon green signs. It doesn't even say school zone or anything like that. It says forty-five miles an hour, and it blinks, but it just has, like, children walking. That's all it even says. It doesn't say school, it doesn't say anything. It just has a picture of some kids crossing the street, and it just blinks at forty-five, but again, nobody, nobody pays attention. I mean, there's nothing there, it's an advisory, there's nothing there to enforce it. It's not your typical school zone speed limit reduction.
Mr. Chairman, it is. It's just advisory, as Mr. Whitfield explained to me, and so there's not, there's not anything to enforce, as opposed to the specific school zone to the west of there at SS Dixon-
Yes, sir.
Where you've got the, it's signed and enforceable in that, and I believe that's what, what this is, the request would be for the DOT, since it's their road, to review the establishment of the school zone in, you know, as opposed to just an advisory. Avis also mentioned some of the things that he thought would be helpful, again, but especially with the maneuvers, since there's no direct median access to the school, is you have to do, depending on which way you go, you have to make a maneuver, and so to the extension of some of the turn lanes, the stacking lanes, if you will, to try to improve the safety. So asking for more of a comprehensive approach to-
Yes, sir.
To the problem.
That is one of our biggest concerns. We do not have direct access out of our property to go westbound on Highway ninety, and so you have to make a right-hand turn, go about five hundred feet, maybe at the most. There's a funeral home right next to us that has the direct access, but that, there's not even, there's not even a de-acceleration lane right there. It's just a median, and at most, you can maybe get two to three cars in there, and what happens is, when you have thirty, forty cars lined up leaving our property at the same time, two might get in there, and then one actually gets stuck on Highway ninety. Now, there are several different places that you can go further down, and many drivers do that, but sometimes, someone just pulls out there and gets stuck on the middle of Highway ninety. Again, with traffic coming at fifty-five miles an hour, all it's going to take is one time to have something devastating take place there.
That was my question, is why, why it wasn't designated as a school zone? So it looks like we're going that direction, and I certainly support that. I mean, anything we can do to improve safety for-
We would appreciate that.
I think that this, if memory serves, it seems like that this, when we were doing the corridor management work on U.S. ninety a number of years ago, of course, the focus, so much of that was on the medians, but I believe that, and Stephen may remember that, I believe that we specifically asked that the DOT look at that and evaluate that. The schools have done nothing but grow since then, so.
We have requested from the DOT already even this year, and they've already said that, they've already done their studies, and that they just feel that it would be more unsafe to slow down traffic than to keep it the way that it is right now. But in the Florida statutes, it does say that all schools require, and it doesn't differentiate between private school or public school, it just says that all schools should have a speed limit reduction. And even the SS Dixon one is crazy, because there's no direct access on Highway ninety whatsoever. The kids go underneath the tunnel to go across the street to get to that field, and then the pickup and the entrances are not off of Highway ninety, they're off side roads, but you still slow down to twenty miles per hour there, and we have, our only access is off Highway ninety, and there's really nothing being done right now to slow down traffic.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynch.
At our Transportation Planning Organization meeting a week or two ago, FDOT did announce that they're, they're getting ready to do a study of Highway ninety. I don't remember the parameters. I think it's basically from-
River to river.
River to river, yeah. And we'll, I would suggest, let's ask DOT to expand the scope of that, to focus in on this particular area. Obviously, the safety concerns around schools hit home with all of us, so if DOT already has that in the works, we can certainly ask them to zone in on this particular area. Mary Beth's in the audience here, she can, she can help us out with that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I remember back when those signs were placed years ago, and it was the issue between the county and the state, being a state road versus a county road, and I think it was more just a gesture back then to try to do something to improve safety. I know I've heard from several of your members as well, and I'd be totally supportive of trying to do a comprehensive study and look at that whole area versus just continuing to piecemeal it.
So the recommendation Thursday would be to request these safety improvements, but go through the TPO to do it?
If that would be appropriate, and maybe ask FDOT to, if they could expedite it, because we're in the summer right now, school starts back in August, so if they get that study done within the next sixty days, maybe we'll have some improvements in place before school starts. Sean?
Chairman, one other comment.
Mr. Chairman, the TPO, or actually the FDOT study that's going out for RFP, is a bicycle pedestrian study, safety study, from river to river, so it may be best for to go ahead and have the Public Works Department go ahead and send that letter of request to FDOT to take a look at that, and we will also go ahead and forward that information to FDOT, so when they do begin their, the bicycle pedestrian study on ninety, that can also be included in there.
Mr. Chairman.
Can we, Mr. Gomian?
If you could, just a moment. And the question is, would, if, sometimes it helps to sweeten the pot a little bit, would the, would the school be in any position to help fund a turn, a right turn lane into the school? fund a turn, a right turn lane into the school? You may want to think about, or just, you know, kind of, if you're talking to DOT or something, kind of use that as a.
That would be a huge expense, I know, on our part.
But sometimes when you partner with DOT and the county and stuff like that, it helps get some of these.
Able to move things along quicker.
So just, just for your consideration.
My recommendation, but let's see what the study says, and if they say, you know, if they start talking about there's some other things that we can do, I mean, then that would be a time, maybe, that we could coast out and think some of that through.
Sir, thank you.
Any other discussion? No, I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of contract WS 845 with Florida Department of Corrections for three inmate work squads assigned to Road and Bridge Department, we have backup on that, is there questions or discussion, I think the approximate cost is about $57,500 per crew, and that's for the year, and the biggest part of that is for the Department of Corrections Officer that has to be on duty, so I would recommend that we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And last item, discussion proposal from the Scambi Timber LLC for timber harvesting of Peter Prince Airport, in the amount of $5 per ton for pine pulpwood, and $12 per ton for chip and saw, and in the backup, there were two bids, and this was the best of the two, so I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
I just have one question, is that money coming into the county or going out from the county?
It's coming to the county, or to the Peter Prince Fund.
Okay.
Remember, these were the trees that we were going to have to get cut back because of your glide slope.
Not a problem, I just wanted to make sure.
No, we're not paying, we're getting, we're going in that fund, yes.
Okay, hearing none, it passes.
And that concludes our report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner, this time we'll go to Budget and Finance Committee, and I'll turn back to Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, item number one is discussion of bids received for abatement project located at 4205 Sixth Avenue in Pace, the low bidder meeting specifications is LJFD Inc., joiners, with a bid of $2,225, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of bids received for abatement project located at 5857 Capital Drive in Gulf Breeze, low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Land Clearing, with a bid of $2,400, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of bids received for abatement project located at 9601 Eagle Nest Drive in Navarre, low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Land Clearing, with a bid of $2,100, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is discussion of bids received for the abatement project located at 2251 Tom Street in Navarre, low bidder meeting specifications is Sessions Land Clearing, with a bid of $2,400, and I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five is discussion of budget amendment 2013-133 in the amount of $1,355,425 to carry forward funds for the resurfacing of 22 roadways, as approved at the June 13, 2013 BOCC Regular Meeting from the Road and Bridge Fund, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item six, discussion of budget amendment 2013-134 in the amount of $217,315 to fund the construction of a multi-use path on East Bay Boulevard, CR 399, as approved at the June 13, 2013 BOCC Regular Meeting from Area 3 Impact Fees, I'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item seven is discussion of budget amendment 2013-135 in the amount of $14,750 to fund the design services related to the new T-hanger construction at Peter Prince Airport, as approved at the June 13, 2013 BOCC Regular Meeting from the Peter Prince Field Enterprise Fund, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item eight is discussion of budget amendment 2013-136 in the amount of $53,500 to fund the rehabilitation of the Navar Beach Water Main, as approved at the June 19, 2013 BOCC Regular Meeting from the Navar Beach Fund, I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And item nine is discussion of county expenditures and check register, and I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And that concludes Budget and Financial Management.
Thank you, Lane, any other comments, questions from staff or the board, anything now we'll open to the public, seeing none, we are adjourned.